Being six thirty on the farm. For Wednesday. August fourth. Item on the agenda with the public here. Public here for my. High Street. We did receive the continuation of the applicant. Maybe the third twenty one. People on the planning board. On behalf of our clients, which are associated with our three classes. August four twenty twenty one. Set for us. The continuation. This is a request from.
Continuing it to September first.
We got a real.
Mrs. Devoe.
Yeah. So I was gonna say that our agenda looks pretty packed.
Well, we have a we have a lot of to continue. Last time. So I would. Because we don't have. We have to ask, right?
But that.
Well, they've requested a continuance to that. They said they accept your continuing.
Yeah, that's only a request.
Right. We have a certain number of days to act. So we scheduled for the eighteenth and then after this one. When is the date after that?
I don't know off the top of my head.
So what you're suggesting is to. Well, at least on the intent, we have the agenda, we need to act, we can act. Say, you know, just sort of, I'm sure they will grant this. And often we can act. Like ourselves. But with the intent that we're waiting for another continuation. One so for another.
If I assume the review is completed at that time. Request, so if he can be heard on the eighteen, he may take.
So we have motion to.
I'll make the motion, continue the hearing to August eighteenth.
In session.
So what does that gonna do to our meeting on the eighteenth if they want to present? Because we're meeting, we have a joint meeting starting at seven o'clock.
Is it which one is that?
That's for the zoning change for ninety six Main Street.
Right.
So we. I mean, we don't know tonight when our.
All right.
So if we have to tell, if we have to open it for half hour. So we could go on forward.
Would you like to save that?
Just go on forward, just if we can have expiration dates on that. So we have motion of a second. November eighth.
All right.
Any thoughts? Read more about. Next on the agenda, the board business. Sorry, so we have South Farm Estates, the modification.
Yes. My name is Manuel Bujinger, I'm the owner of South Farm Estates, five eighty six Manly Street, Westbridge, Rhode Island. We submitted a plan, Michael Cost is not available, his father is in the hospital. So I am here trying to do the best I can, so we we were supposed to do underground utilities at South Farm. But due to the drainage, due to. The culvert being six feet under, Mr. Cosker did not address the issue of how we were going to cross that culvert. How we were going to get the. Electrical pipes through the tight easement. So we referred to a note that's on the. Cut sheets for, it says. To talk to the electrical contractor or the company that's gonna be supplying utilities. We contacted them and they wrote a letter that they recommend that we put the wires overhead till we get after the culvert. At South Farm.
Well, I guess my question.
There is a drainage easement on the right hand side, and then there's two sets of swales on the left hand side. One swale is a four foot wide, three foot deep stone swale. That goes along and catch all the water and run into the big detention basing on your left as you're driving into South Farms.
But I went down.
So we also said that because I know you guys did that at Gatsby Lane, I think it was, and the engineer, I think his name was Simon. He said that he senses such a long stretch of road that if there was ever a malfunction or they had to do it, A, we have to encase in concrete. Because it's a primary going up the road. He said, B, if we get the primary and there is a problem, then we're shutting down the whole road. To maintain to maintenance it. So he says his recommendation, his suggestion is to put it overhead. And not put it in the road. Our utilities are not in the layout. Well, they are not, sir. It it's not a forty foot layout, sir. It's it's fourteen foot of road or sixteen foot of road, if I remember correctly, and then there's eighteen inches of. Shoulder that they they want for a shoulder per town spec or maybe the ordinance that they want. And then immediately goes into a one to one slope, three foot flat bottom, one to one slope, and then back again, so there is.
Right, right, the layer, the. And there's a couple of feet, three feet between the pitch of pavement and that. And that's where we have.
Well, this is what we gave to. The power company there. And this was what they came back to because it says on. Page, I want to say it's S two or S three, that to coordinate with utility supplier, and that's what they came back with us. Because we originally said that that's what they wanted, and this is what they came back with us at. No, the 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 companies, the electric companies who designs where they're gonna put the the conduit in, we don't design where we're gonna put it in.
I I know.
Why couldn't we put it under the road? Because they said if we have thirteen, twelve hundred feet of road, so it's a fourteen foot travel. So if we were ever to have a maintenance issue. Then they're shutting down the whole road, and not to mention that's encased in concrete, sir. They don't recommend, I mean, he was very specific and adamant when he wrote me this letter. Because I said we needed a waiver. That's just the that's just the physical address we have there so that they can visit the site. We don't have a physical address for South Street, or we didn't have it at the time when we put our submittals in. We physically, a physical address was nineteen thirteen South Street four. You know, it's the number that's on the pole so that they can physically get to the site. They can't type in South Farm Estates in their GPS, it's not on there yet.
Shouldn't we first be deciding whether it's a major or minor modification?
I.
That's what I'm saying, I think it should be too.
We're just simply asking to get after the culvert, like even if we were able to get it in, you still gotta go six feet underground under a culvert. Like we're actually just. Six feet underground, so you would be eight feet below the culvert. Because this is a private road. This is a HOA road, this is like a, this is my private road for my own development. We're just simply asking for relief to get under this culvert. Like, we can't go through the right hand side, they they wrote a letter for an easement. Donnie, this is our electrician here, actually, he can help out. The easement is on the right hand side as you drive in. Inside the layout. Yes.
Right.
State your name. No, it's inside the, it's it's the drainage, it's that swale, that black swale is the drainage easement. That's that's the. One hundred percent of it, I'll show you on this.
He's referring to the detail right now.
I don't have that set of plans, but I mean, that's fine, but we do have. Oh, we're talking on the right hand side, right there, three hundred sixty two point six four feet. That's inside the layout, that's the road, that's the edge of the road right there. Correct. So it goes from the solid line to the checkered line is the easement, correct, that line there, that's the easement. Sorry? I guess I'm not understanding your question, sir. But we don't have sixteen feet on either side. Like, this is, I don't understand, maybe I'm not understanding it correctly. So we have. Forty feet of layout, and it says eighteen foot gravel road. You go to the plan, it shows a sixteen foot road, then it shows eighteen inch of shoulder, twelve feet of swale. Twelve feet of swale on the other side, so you're. Here you go. Can I do this?
I had, the plan's right there, so this is the.
Well, I'm just saying, it's right here, like if you take a minute, you can see it.
The road profile is sixteen feet.
Okay, then it's got twelve feet of. Of. Correct. There isn't, there's eighteen inches, like this is what I'm saying, if you look at this plan, there's eighteen inches. How many primaries? To go from the.
Two.
But you have, you have a four foot deep stone trench. This is what the power company is arguing with me about, we have a, we have a four foot swale, four foot wide, three feet tall of stone trench. So we're gonna put a stone trench next to an electrical line, eighteen inches apart. Just, I mean, I don't think they're asking. They're the ones that are telling you, so I mean, how do I, how do I go back to the power company and say, no, this is not what we're gonna do? We're just asking for relief to get to the culvert.
Ready?
Yes, sir.
You need to show him that cut on it right there because he can't see it on this. That's water.
I mean, all I'm saying is, I'm not agreeing or disagreeing with, obviously, the board, all I'm saying is, this is what they require. This is what they're asking me to do, they wrote a letter. I just need relief to get there to the culvert, and then I can deal with the rest of it. All this is gonna do is just gonna, it was already, how long was it to get the process, six months, five months? It was already five months just to get this far with the power company. Like, I'm, my house is in progress, you guys, you know, released one law, I'm very appreciative. But at the end of the day. If we can get. I'm sorry. I, we would still be here today to try to get the road in. And it wouldn't, I don't think it would have changed anything, sir, because this is still the requirement coming back, they still don't want it under the road.
I'd like to hear the town officials. Mr. Secretary, are you there?
Yes, sir.
So we're just, we're discussing the modification for South Farm Estates and the underground utilities.
Yes, sir.
And just trying to get your thoughts on it, I know I went to the other. Four lots of divisions, three lots of divisions, that we insisted on having the utility underground and gaps, we actually made them. Remove the phone and go all the way back to the street. Seems like they could all make it work between the pitch of pavement and the swell.
So, Mr. Chairman, I did meet with the developer slash applicant slash owner. At the at this site. And the question was also posed to me, if you look at the approved subdivision plan, it does, it did indicate that it would be underground utility. Because that is while the the board. Has a. Developed that regulations for allowing, if you will, a substandard. Road layout and construction. For a privately owned. A subdivision that we privately owned and maintained by the homeowners through a homeowners association. The requirement for an underground utility. Has always been made part of that fallout subdivision requirement. What the board reduced requirement on has to do with the width of the improvement. The stormwater management, allowing there were. A country of a country type drainage system without a need for a separate drainage parcel. Allowing a roadside. Drainage system to be incorporated into a fallout or less number of lots, but not necessarily not waving. Or eliminating the need for underground utility. In this particular case, it did say that the owner or developer shall coordinate. The installation of the utility with the private utility companies. But it does say underground to be coordinated, so I believe they did the work, they installed the drainage, the drainage swales. And they were installed the. The binder. And the drain and the culvert. So the question is, well, whether they can be. Whether that requirement can be waived. To allow for overhead. Installation for a certain portion of the roadway and then transition back into. Underground as they get closer to the houses that are being developed on the subdivision road. It is quite, it is quite within the purview of the planning board to grant such waiver if it so chooses. But I'm not sure. The basis for. Allowing that, other than the fact that they build the road. And install the drainage systems prior to finalizing the location of the utility. So. While I understand, given the fact that some of that work has already been done. I understand the position of the applicant slash developer. But. The board. I'm not quite sure how the board can find that it is in the public interest to do so in this particular instance. And the board. While again, he has authority to do that. I'm afraid the the board, if he so chooses to do that, might also be creating precedence. For within the, for underground utility to be waived. For all projects, including the less than four lot, as well as more than four lots. Because there is nothing that says in your rules and regulations that less than four lots can be waived. So with that in mind, with that, that's a consideration. The board. Should have, in my mind. Thread very carefully in our issue with such waiver. Because of the Pandora's box that it might be opening and. Because the only rationale you can give is that the work, they 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 install the roadway and the drainage system. Before they finalize the location of the underground utility. I'm not quite sure. That is a sufficient basis for granting the requested waiver. Again, it's the board's prerogative, but I'm not quite sure that there is sufficient. Basis where it could be deemed to be in public interest to grant such waiver.
The last three vehicles like this, I went and visited two of them, I don't want to visit this one. They all appear to have the underground utilities called the pavement, about eighteen inches. Under there, why, why would that not work in this case?
Is that a question for me, or is that a question for the applicant?
Oh, I asked the applicant already, he said he couldn't do it, but I'm asking from an engineering. From your engineering experience, is there a reason I can't do that?
They see something, sir.
I am not quite sure, Mr. Chairman. About how. What the engineering argument will be. In the sense that if it's, if the road is installed, they haven't finished the road in terms of final pavement. You can actually, you will cut the pavement and do the work and then backfill it, so. That I I cannot make an engineering argument for it.
Say something? Can I talk, can I, Azu, Mr. Azu?
That to me.
Azu, this is, this is Manny, so like I had showed you on site, we have eighteen inches of shoulder. As you're driving into South Farm Estates, but you have a four foot wide, three foot deep stone trench instead of piping. And that is the reason why they're giving us a hard time of putting a trench next to that. That system, that's what I had explained to you on site. That was the, that was the problem with them installing underground on the job site, and then on the right hand side is the drainage easement.
Right, that 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 could be an argument, and and yes, I said, oh, well, on this side, I see your argument, but you could also. Redo redo that drainage and then put that stuff first. Also, nothing, while it might be our construction cost to you. There is nothing that says you couldn't cut the pavement and put it in the road lay, in the road layout, in the traveled width.
We do have a letter from National Grid saying that they they recommend us not putting in the middle of the road because of maintenance issues in the future, so. We have eleven hundred foot of road or twelve hundred feet of road. If there is an issue that, A, it's encased in concrete, but B, they have to shut the road, so all these lots and people have to, you know, what, walk twelve hundred feet? Because they can't service, it's not like it's a public road where you have twenty four feet of travel, this is only sixteen feet of travel. Maintenance the road, you shut the road down, so this is why everybody puts it on the shoulder. But in this particular instance, this isn't like the other three or four or five subdivisions that's in town. These swales are on both sides of the road. And you have a four foot wide, three foot deep stone trench going down the side of one whole trench. We're just asking for relief, Mr. Azu, town engineer, on the shoulder of the road where the stone trench is, where we have to put it outside the easement. To the end of the culvert, because if, even if we were able to get the pipe in the ground, then we still have to figure a way to go through the wetlands and cross underneath that six foot culvert. So it's multiple inches, it's not the same as going down a road of gaps.
Well, that that, no, no, she, so, so that is. When the project was designed and and being cognizant of the fact that there will be underground utility. That's, that's, that's kind of spelled out, so before, before that project was built. I I think that is a question that should have been posed. To your engineering and utility company, and then a modification for layout of the drainage system would have been in order. That is some, that is a design question that should have been addressed before the work started. So by the work being initiated and started and done, it presupposes, it presupposes that you knew that you could take care of it. So, so making the argument now that, oh, we have this drainage system. Perhaps if that was gonna be a problem, where you see the plan, when you got the approved documents, and then you recognize, okay, by the way, I'm gonna do underground utility. Perhaps that's the time to go to the engineer, it's okay, if I'm gonna coordinate this underground utility, where would you propose that I put the underground utility? Not proceed your work. Do all the drainage system installation, pave the road, and so, oh, by the way, I can't do the underground utility. The utility company has a problem with it. These are, I I I would imagine that this is not the first project that you have done. That requires a lot of special site considerations. So these are the questions, when you get the approved plan, and we've got a specific requirement that underground utility be constructed. That's when you go to the utility company, and so by the way, if you're aware that you guys wanna do this, work it out with your engineer. And if that was gonna be a problem, come back to the planning board, it's okay, this is what we wanna do, not, basically, what has happened here. Is you created, if you will, you created a hardship that did not exist. you created a hardship that did not exist. This hardship did not exist. You basically created a hardship. And um so that is something that you have to deal with. Uh, at the end of the day, you present your argument to the board. And I'm it's not my function. It's not my function to design the project or make an argument as to how uh you could do the project or why they should now waive it for you. That is something that that is the argument that you are making. That is the argument your engineer could be making. But that's not the argument that I should be making for you. That's not my function. My function is to advise uh the board, and then the board can make its decision. The board does, the board, it's not bound, it's not bound to um accept any recommendation. That is just a recommendation that I make when I do reviews. Okay, so um at the end of the day, I don't, I'm not gonna be making an argument for them to give you a waiver because there is there are ways for you to still do the underground utility. So that's not my function to make your argument.
So this is what I got, Mr. Azu. This is what I got. I have a a engineer from National Grid that doesn't wanna put underground. I have a a true set of plans that says to coordinate. But at the end of the day, I have a house that needs to be built and I'm still five or six months further out. So I'm asking for a relief from the board, from a from a zoo, from whoever. So all this does is prolong five, six more months, and we're asking for five hundred feet or six hundred feet of pole to get through the culvert so where we can dig safely. That's all we're asking for.
Uh, you're not asking, let's be clear here, Manny. You're not asking for a waiver from Azu. Azu does not have the authority. Azu does not have the authority to grant a waiver.
I agree, hundred percent. You are a hundred percent correct. Uh, we're asking for relief. I'm stuck between, and I understand I'm not with you, Azu. I'm just saying, I'm stuck between National Grid writing a letter that they don't wanna do the job. I'm stuck between planning, saying that I can't do the job. But at the end of the day, National Grid supplies the electric. So what do I do from here?
The right side of the road with all those trees out. What's the distance?
Asking asking about what you do from here, it's not the right question. That is really not the right question. If the board is saying to you, uh, we're not gonna give you a waiver, then what you need to do is get back to your engineer and National Grid and put your three heads together. That's not.
We have an app, approved set of plans is what I don't understand. This is what's frustrating is we have an app, approved set of plans. We give it to National Grid and Mr. Driscoll, we give this to National Grid. National Grid comes back and writes us this letter. You're telling me we can get it in. National Grid's telling me we can't get it in.
No, no, what?
What?
No, no, this is what happens. Sure. Let's get the facts clear. Let's get the facts clear. You have an approved plan. You also have conditions through you, Mr. Chairman. They also have conditions of approval. And one of the glaring statements in that conditions of approval is this.
This is, I don't disagree with you, but I'm just saying, if we put this point, if we say we're gonna put the electric uh the electric trench in the middle of the road, I don't care at this point. I just wanna get it in. But they don't agree. What do I do at that point, Mr.?
Let me finish. They they rule the you get approved subdivision plan. And that uh that approved subdivision plan, it's not in isolation. It's in tandem. It is in tandem with the conditions of approval. And one of the glaring statements in those conditions of approval that was never appealed, that was accepted as part of the approvals, says this. Okay, and I'm paraphrasing because I don't have it in front of me, but it says essentially that no waivers are granted all the subdivision rules and regulations without a specific grant by the planning board. And so one of the requirements of the planning board is that you comply with its rules and regulations. And its rules and regulations says that the utility has gotta be underground.
We're not disagreeing with that, town engineer. We're not disagreeing. I agree with you. I I hundred percent agree. All I'm saying is in this situation, the power company doesn't wanna put it underground. I'm fine. I if you wanna put it in the middle of the road, let's put it in the middle of the road. I'm not gonna get it accepted by them. So what do I do in this situation? And I know you say it's not an approved set of plans. This is what we put it through planning. Like, I I don't understand.
I I Azu, I I think that first of all, what needs to find is we're gonna discuss to modifiably the waiver. And then if we deny it, then you have to figure out what to do next. So I mean, it's every other label I've settled this board.
But every job is different. Every job's not the same. Every job is different. Like, this job has its own hurdles.
And I I would argue that that pole at Station One Hundred.
What is it?
There's a there's a new pole at Station One Hundred.
No, that pole's existing.
A hundred seven foot. That's what's actually feeding the front house. Hundred seven point two foot off the road.
Pole is existing.
All the existing pole.
That's one sixty-eight point one. One sixty-eight is the one that's on the curb.
And they go underground to the house.
Correct.
They want to move it two and a half inch. Correct.
Through the middle of the gentleman's drive. Because we just, but this.
That's actually in the left side.
On the right side of the road. Do a crossing where? You can't do that. That's an easement.
So can I make a suggestion? Can the board make a determination whether it's a major change or a minor change? Because if it's major, you're gonna be back here in a couple of weeks, making having this whole conversation again, because you have to have a hearing. So I just don't want you to get into all of this if you're gonna have to do it all again in a couple of weeks. So.
So so may I ch- may I chime in here? I think I'm losing my connection because it's coming in in and out.
What's frustrating here is talking about an easement, it's not even in the layout. The easement is outside of the layout.
The lease, the easement is in the layout, is the swale, the grass swale that's there, glass swale. And that is the easement. No, it's not, all right. Like, you we're basing this off of something different.
Uh, so we have to determine whether this is major.
Oh, I'll make the motion, Mr. Chairman, that uh the request for mo- modification is a major modification. Seems to be a lot of, that seems to be a lot of work and coordination that needs to be done here. Hi.
Okay, so now we need to notice a butters and set a hearing date. Um, so we will.
So.
So while we're on this for South Farm, did we ever come up with a bond release? So I can release the lots for the second meeting now.
For South Farm?
For South Farm Estates. We we asked, and you guys were very pleasant and helped the development go on, or at least my lot. But we never got a bond release amount, so I can run them.
Speak of the devil.
For me.
They're asking about a bond release now.
But this is muted. No, no, I can't see. Oh, no, I left it. It's good. It's done. So, Mr. Chairman, I think it went last.
Before we discuss it, just back to the major modification. So Mr. The Jim G either has the opportunity to just go forward and put it underground or he can apply for a major modification. No, finally, but it's pay the consultant review fee and have it reviewed by our uh whether it be this number or an outside.
You really took a vote on that? Okay, cuz cuz at the end of the day, it equal, so he can come back out as a major modification, and you may still not give him the waiver. So.
So in this situation, if we come back as a major modification, power company won't put it underground, you won't allow it overhead. What does this guy do that has a set of plans and helps develop? We just stop it? How does that work?
But here's the thing, Mr. Chairman, and I this is almost like making it the problem of the planning board. It's not the board's problem. Ask them on a gas we drive has drainage swales on both sides of the road.
No, there's only one side of the drainage swales on gas.
No, they have both. But with the very both sides of the road. So the argument, this is crazy. This is crazy. The you may still go through a major modification, but but at the end of the day, he's asking you to design his project.
No, we have a set of plans that are approved, and it's not getting done.
Okay.
We have a letter from an engineer.
You know something? It can be underground. They can change that drainage system. Whether they put it in, they went ahead and built a project before they came with the underground. How they gonna do the underground?
So six months to get electrical, just to get us back a design. Six months. That's nobody's fault. It's 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 our own fault. But if it was your project, it'd be completely different. But it's six months that we've waited. So this year, just to get us in front of it, will probably be another four or five months. But I get it. It's not the board's fault. It's my fault because we didn't do adequate plan. But yet you guys review this, we pay a fee for you guys to review this and stamp it that, hey, we accept this. But you accepted it. We came in front of this, and you guys accepted it. Accepted, right. So you guys know there's no electrical on here. But there's no electrical drawing. There's no electrical drawing.
Mr. Chairman.
That's fine. Listen, I get it. I understand. No problem. Appreciate. Now, what about the bond release? When are we gonna get the bond release that we've asked twice now?
Mr. Chairman, for the record, and this is getting out of control and getting ridiculous. For for the the planning board reviews applications, approves applications, and specifically in the conditions of approval, whether there's a specific design of the underground utility or not, it says that it shall be done unless there's a specific waiver of the requirements. So that the applicant and his engineer and the utility company are very cognizant of the conditions of approval. So I mean, coming in here and trying to argue that somehow whether implied or not, that board bears a certain level of responsibility. It's right at ridiculous.
It was kinda called courtesy. That's what it's called. Courtesy. Every job has its own hurdles. Every job has its own problems. That's why we come in front of a board and ask for a little lenience or a little guidance. That's all we're asking. But that's fine. I understand. Thank you, board. I appreciate it. What about the the bond release? I can get these long bond, these lots released. This has been two meetings now. No, we had two. I asked Jasmine over there would know. We had two lot, two times we've asked. I've been on Jasmine this whole week that we've been trying to get, and I actually talked to Paul at the highway department to get a number, but Mr. Azu has three or four jobs that he's trying to fill in and that he made statements at the last meeting. So he's busy, but I still need to get these lots released. But it should have been on the agenda tonight. But but what do you mean it's not your problem? Like, how do we just say no?
Actually, Mr. Chairman, at last time that they came and requested a bond release, there wasn't, so you the board decided to hold one lot and release the other were two lots. Uh, uh, lose one. So they can apply again for the official release.
We did.
But at the end of the day, at the end of the day, it's not on the agenda. And and quite frankly, I will go a step further that we cannot continue to hear. This is the one, obviously, it's very unique to this particular developer because we have some type of arguments on Trinity Circle. So the I have never seen a situation, and I've been working in this town for over thirty years. Haven't seen these issues. Okay? We have Colonial Drive. We have a a Crimson Heights. They come in and they discuss their issues ahead of time. Not go ahead and do the work and then turn around and 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 start blaming the board and saying, oh, you didn't review it, or you shouldn't.
Did we ask for, did I ask to be on the agenda to get my bond release, to get the lots released? But I did ask, correct?
You did, which may have been a safe on on my part.
And I also did ask for a a lot release, a bond release, a Trinity, a partial release on that, but which we never got into the agenda. Okay, I just wanted to get that clear on the record, that we did ask for it. But how is that my fault? The planning board just told me that's not their fault. But again, it's like the board told me, how is that my fault? I need the money to proceed forward. I need the lots to be released.
To you, Mr. Chairman.
It's not anybody's fault.
Hold on. Hold on. To you, Mr. Chairman.
That's fine.
To you, Mr. Chairman.
Good done. This isn't on our agenda. Let's move forward.
To you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
To you, Mr. Chairman, to Mrs. DeBoeran. He just raised the issue of Trinity Circle. Okay? And I sent a letter, and he's aware of it. I met with him on site as well as meeting with his engineer. The project has drainage problems on Trinity Circle. I said to him twice, submit a plan to address the drainage deficiency that you have. And he tried, he he also tried to get me.
Hundred percent.
He also tried to get me to design the project for him. I says, no, you go back to the engineer. Your drainage doesn't work.
He is correct.
At three locations. So he just raised the issue of Trinity Circle. The Trinity Circle hasn't even been built to comply with the approvals.
We have eighty-two thousand dollars in bond. There isn't thirty thousand dollars there to do in repairs. So what we're saying is there should be a partial release. We just paid thirty-five thousand dollars to pave the whole subdivision. That's what we're saying.
No, no, what you're saying, no, because the job of the the job of the planning board is to protect the public, Mr. Chairman. This is ridiculous.
It is ridiculous. One person can take it aboard. Very ridiculous.
Uh, yes, please. Thank you. Um, when um somewhere along the way, like thirty thirty lots into the uh sales, uh, one of the closing attorneys had conducted this title examination and apparently did a title examination that was somewhat more thorough uh than the ones that anybody had done uh prior prior to him. And uh he came up with uh a second uh per uh performance covenant uh that had been recorded. Actually, not the second, it was the first. And and I believe it relates to the fact that the subdivision had been approved, and I believe that performance covenant uh was recorded at the time of the original approval. And then I believe it came back and I don't, we we weren't involved directly in the in the permitting. We bought it fully permitted. Um, but there was a modification uh that was done. And uh I believe at that time, when it was the modified modification plan was recorded, there was another uh performance covenant um recorded. So the that second performance covenant was the performance covenant that was presented to us and also came up in our title exam. It was the only one we thought uh was on record. Um, but it turns out that there there are these two different uh performance covenants covering the the exact same uh property, the the uh, you know, the fifty-six. Um, but it turns out that there, there are these two different performance covenants covering the exact same property, the, the, you know, the 56 lots in the development. And the lots are now fully released, all, all 56. And as a matter of house cleaning for title, record title purposes, we're just seeking to have the other performance covenant released as well. I, I had provided a, a cop, I had provided a proposed form of release that identifies all 56 lots. I apologize. It, it covers 55 because this had been picked up on, if you recall, you had retained one lot. On the, the, the second group of releases. And then we subsequently got that lot released. And this was a known issue at that time. So that particular covenant release did cover, for Lot 27, did address the release of both covenants. That's correct. 27 is fully released from both covenants.
How do you want to work? Or you want lot, lot numbers, or we just want to make a motion to release the covenant?
The, the lots, the lots seeking to be released on the form that I submitted are identified in the form. The last sentence, lots 1 through 26 inclusive and lots 28 through 56 inclusive. As, as I said, as 27 was already released from both covenants.
So I'll make the motion with the lots 1 through 26 and lots 28 through 56 to be released.
Thank you, thanks very much. Have a good evening.
Recommendation is to extend this, correct? I'll make a motion to grant the extension of for two years.
Um, other than the fact that we, uh, I'm going to be recommending through the director on the year plan. A, a couple of revisions to the rules and regulations that I see for, just based on the inspections that I've been doing. Yeah, but I need to run it by them first.
One thing that we missed, and I don't know if something you want to add.
Probably subsequently fixed it. The length of some 50 to full lot subdivision. Yeah, yeah, we did that. Absolutely, we did that, but we did, um, yeah. After that major change, there was a couple of items that we absolutely.
I don't want to pay for that mail either.
Because we cleaned that up along with the, uh, the lot shape requirement. That was correct. That was correct. Yeah. So move.